Good evening, or good afternoon, I should say. Good morning. It is still morning. It is 10:17 a.m. This is Wednesday, October 26. We are going to begin our council time agenda at this point. And I would like to ask first if our county manager Kathleen Otto has any amendments to the agenda.
Yes, I do have a couple amendments for council's consideration. The first one is adding item 3.5 under new business, and it's the noise ordinance. Have a brief discussion on that. And then 7.1 under executive session will be 10 minutes rather than 60 minutes. And then adding 7.3 pending litigation for 10 minutes, and there's no action.
And is there any objection to those changes to the agenda? And hearing none, they stand as suggested. Thank you. So we'll move to public comment and begin with comments from the public that is on any item that is on today's council time agenda, but only on the council time agenda. So if you are in the hearing room or online, please indicate to staff your interest in testifying. Staff, are there any that you see who wish to testify?
There, we do not have anybody online or in the hearing room. Thank you.
Okay, old business. Minutes of October 19. Is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Or second? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any suggestions, edits, changes? And hearing none, they stand approved as drafted. Thank you very much. Then we go to 2.2, the tolling staff report, resolution and white paper. I'll ask Lindsay here to kick this discussion off.
Sure. Good morning, council. So what you have before you is the final draft. I mean, of course, the council can still make changes, but this is the revised intended final draft of the resolution regarding tolling of the I-5 Bridge and the I-5 and I-205 corridors in the Portland metro area. This includes the changes and the language that was discussed at council time last week. So if we could scroll down just a little bit, you can see, keep going right there. So this language that you have here is the language that was changed. It was changed in both the white paper and in the resolution. So this is the only change that was made. Of course, the council can make more changes, and this is slated to go on the council's Tuesday agenda for November 1st.
And let's just read what was changed, Lindsay, if you don't mind, so that we hear it directly.
Sure, the last section here was changed to say that the Clark County Council is opposed to tolling the I-5 and I-205 corridors as proposed, and that references the proposal from the tolling work group in Oregon. The council understands that tolls may be necessary to build large infrastructure projects like the I-5 Bridge. If specific tolls related to the initial construction of the I-5 Bridge only, that sunset after a predetermined period of time can be proposed, they should be considered.
And the same change is made in the report.
Correct, in the white paper, yes.
The white paper. And further discussion, council? Well, thank you for making those changes. At this point, is the resolution and so on going to be on our agenda next week?
Correct, Tuesday, November 1st, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Tuesday, November 1st. And we will see it come forward to us with this language that we see before us now. So thank you for having made that. Okay, new business. Kathleen?
The first one is the, I want to make sure I'm getting the right one. The Commission on Aging is asking council to consider a proclamation for November 1st for the National Family Caregivers Month. Lindsay, has this happened? Is this proclamation one that we've done in the past? Do you know?
Yes. I haven't looked at the exact language to see how it compares, but yes, we've done caregivers before, I believe. I'll double check.
And I think this, the proclamation is pretty straightforward unless council has any suggested changes. We can add this to Tuesday's meeting next week.
The most recent time that we did this was 2017.
Okay.
It's been a couple years, but we have done it previously.
Any questions from council? Okay, let's move to 3.2.
Okay, and this one is coming from the Veterans Advisory Board, recognizing Veterans Day, which is in November, and just recognizing, acknowledging all the veterans and the work that they have done for our community. And this would also be on the November 1st meeting.
Questions or comments from council?
Madam Chair, I just have a very general question that's related to this. Obviously, I support anything having to do with Veterans Day. How do we get proclamations generally? I mean, this Department of Interior has promoted Native American Heritage Month, and I would be interested in supporting that if anyone is requesting it. Have we heard anything about a request for a proclamation on that topic to commemorate Native Americans?
I have not. We can get recommendations from the community, from advisory groups, or from the council or staff. We have not received, and all of those come before council. So we have not received any specific, but we can certainly draft something. And I believe October is the month, so we might be a day behind in that, but we can certainly draft something from next Tuesday.
It's, I believe, November that it's celebrated, but I was just curious. Thank you.
Anything on the Veterans Advisory Board proclamation? Okay, let's move to 3.3, ARPA funding on the law library, 14,000. I don't know if this is Kathleen or Maria Sosnowski, who is going to discuss this.
So I will introduce it. So this is part of the 2022 Small Projects Grant that the council already has allocated for internal requests for ARPA funding. And as requested by council, staff would come back and just provide an update on who's being awarded and what is being awarded in the ARPA grants. So Laura Young is on this morning, who will present this one request that came in in quarter three for the law library.
Good morning, councilors. So as the county manager stated, we only had one request for county, for small projects in quarter three for 2022. The Clark County Law Library is primarily funded by a statutory portion of court filing fees, and those revenues were dramatically impacted by COVID, so the need for tax is not fully covered in the current budget. So the decreased revenue significantly impacted their ability to keep materials current, and the materials budget is half of what it was pre-pandemic. So the library is requesting $9,000 approximately for the purchase of materials from several vendors and an additional $5,000 for a replacement of aging equipment that is used primarily by the public so that they can keep those materials permanent and provide access to the community, to the library, which is really an essential service for folks who need self-representation. And the library serves approximately 10,000 individuals per year on average pre-COVID. Do you have any questions? So the total is 14,000 of the requests.
Thank you, Laura. Are there questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Medici? I'm sorry, Rylander. I'll be in trouble on that one.
I'll work on making my voice lower.
Louder.
Or in louder. I always get, I always, my wife tells me I talk too loud, so I try to be quieter.
You don't believe a word of that.
Okay. And so my understanding is that the replacement of the old copiers with new copiers, the vendor will take care of that on a percentage of revenue, and you want money for coin boxes to put on those machines. I just assume, but I want to be careful about assumption, that when those machines cycle out of use, that those coin boxes will be able to be reused with new replacement equipment. I'm just assuming that, but just want to make sure.
I can certainly follow up to make sure that we have that information, Counselor.
This is Maria Sosnowski of the Law Library, and I can answer that question for you.
Please go ahead.
The vendor provides the equipment, and this time they were able to basically replace the guts with parts. The next time, we may be able to do that again, but you know, as technology changes, we do not know for sure.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the $5,000 we spend on coin boxes don't, it's not just sort of a waste of money or it disappears or it can't be used when we replace the equipment in the future. I'm just looking ahead.
Right. Let me clarify that the money is going for basically the electronics within the coin box. So rather than the box itself, it is the electronics that are being updated and replaced.
And it sounds like if we get more foot traffic, that would allow the vendor to pay for the box anyway. Is that correct?
Yes, if we increase our foot traffic back to what it was pre-COVID, I think we would go back to the vendor assuming all of these costs again.
Further questions from council? Okay, is there any action on this item, Kathleen?
No, this is just for council's information. Thank you.
Moving then, and thank you for your report, Laura and Maria. We appreciate your being here. 3.4, the staff report and resolution for temporary road closures. I don't know if you've got Ken Later set for this, Kathleen, or?
Yes, he will be presenting the details, but I just want to make this clear for council and the community that the reason why we put this on council time is that the road closure will begin, if council approves, prior to the next Tuesday council meeting. This road had been closed previously, and this is doing some warranty work that they found, but Ken will provide some more specific information on this.
Good morning, council. Thank you for your time. This staff report and resolution before you today is a request from Clark Regional Wastewater District, as Kathleen mentioned, to perform some warranty work. Their contractor needs to go back in and repair a pipe installation that had occurred prior to our own project for the county. This is on Northeast 99th Street. So right now, our contractors have that area busy with work. In fact, we're about to complete our large grading fill on the north end of the Lichner landfill. And we recognize that we need this work done by the district in good shape so that we can build our brand-new road improvements over the top of this pipe. So I can go into detail about what that failure is in the original installation on the district's work, but primarily, we are, we're asking for approval on this resolution so that the district's contractor could begin work as soon as next Monday. And this would coincide with us kind of being out of the area with our contractor on our project so that they can get in there, get the work done, and then we can keep our schedule on track to do the work. So I'm happy to read through this or answer any questions that you might have. The closure itself would affect primarily about 50 residents that are north of 105th and 99th Street at the intersection and put them through a detour of about six blocks. And we wanted to make sure that we did get public notification out, even though the approval has not happened yet. But we let the district know that we weren't opposed to them providing public notice with the understanding that we couldn't guarantee that you would approve the closure, and, but we wanted to make sure that that notification got out on time, so. Any questions that I can answer for you?
I do have a question. Any idea about how much time? Are we talking days or are we talking weeks?
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Rylander. We are talking weeks. So this is a, this is a deep installation that they're going back in to repair with an open trench. So we have given the district a kind of an outside window of six weeks. Now, the entire area wouldn't be closed down for that time, but certainly that portion between 105th and 107th, that two-block area, would be closed down for several weeks. Fortunately, we have only two residents that access that area directly off that section of road, and we've been working pretty closely with them on our own project and have requested that the district do the same for the work that they need to complete. So this would potentially go into the middle of, the middle of December. And if you, if you go down a couple slides there, onto page eight for me, this is, this is that area over on the left-hand side of the screen where you see 99th Street. That's kind of where it dead-ends right now into the north end of the landfill. So that, that section is part of what would be closed. It doesn't access any homes directly. But then the section where you see the two road barricades there between 105th and 107th, yes, thank you. That's, that's where the main effect would be. That would route traffic for that northern area of the subdivision up through that six-block detour and then block off the property access during that time for the one parcel on the north where it says road closed, and then the parcel to the south.
And you're comfortable that there's between now and when you're going to start the project, that there's sufficient time to notify and make sure the public is aware? Because we've heard some complaints in the past that things get done and people aren't necessarily cognizant of them. So I just want to make sure it's enough time.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, and we have, we have requested that certainly as a requirement for this approval. And I do know that the district, I think some of us were surprised that they were pretty efficient, but we saw in the Columbian that they had posted this closure starting on Monday. And unfortunately, that article didn't say pending council approval because we would not allow the closure without your approval. But the notifications are going out right now. I believe the signage is up. I haven't confirmed that yet. The notifications are going out to the homeowners, and that is a requirement of the closure that the district needs to make sure that happens, as well as emergency services and the school district and any other public agencies that might be affected by the reroute of traffic through the area.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Olson?
Sorry, thank you. Thanks, Ken. I'm curious, not that it matters one way or the other with regard to our decision today, but how, when was the original work completed by Tappanee, and how long did it take to identify the failures?
Yeah, a very good question, Counselor Olson. So I believe the original work was completed in spring of this year. And what the, what the contractor had done was they did a directional bore from about the area of 107th there and pushed the pipe through to the east, all the way to the landfill, so past that dead-end area. So a very deep directional bore installation. And what they didn't realize at the time, and what we discovered when we got in the project area with our contractor, we started peeling back the pavement as part of our road improvement along in the area of 105th. And we noticed that, that a lot of the subgrade material had settled, which indicated there were some voids that, that were introduced when that pipe was pushed through. So the district went ahead and did a pretty thorough investigation of, of the area on 10-foot intervals and discovered that, that there had been some voids that were created as part of that boring process, kind of an unexpected condition. And so the solution that they are proposing is to go back in now and open trench that pipe, which, you know, would have been an alternative for their installation to begin with. But, but, you know, we were, I think on the front end, the district was trying to provide a solution that would have less impact on the public. Unfortunately, with the materials that are under there, it caused those voids to form, so. And I'm not sure I answered maybe a second part of your question if you, if you want to ask again, so.
It was just, when were the failures originally noticed, and maybe not that long ago?
Yeah, and so we noticed those once we, once we started our construction project not too long ago and got in the area, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, we appreciate your rapidly taking care of this after it has been discovered because that is a rather quick beginning of the demise of a project that should have gone well from the beginning. So thank you for taking care of it.
Yeah, and Chair Bowerman, if I, if I might just add, I really want to, kudos to the district for working directly with us on a solution. I think, you know, these things can get to be pretty complex, trying to figure out what's going on. They've, they, they and their contractor understand the ownership of the problem and are actively trying to correct it. And this is just a matter of us now, having completed a portion of our project and now getting out of their way so they can get into that same area and do the work, so.
Thank you. There is a resolution that was before us, 22-10-15. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Second?
It's been, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we pass Resolution 22-10-15 for the road closures as discussed. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, and those opposed, nay. It is passed unanimously. Thank you, Ken, for explaining the process to us, and we appreciate your, your action.
Thank you.
Item 3.5, the noise ordinance. Kathleen?
Yes, so this was brought up last week from council. I did ask April to pull out what our current code says, what the City of Vancouver code says, just to start the conversation with council this morning. Part of the path forward to, we need, you know, the council has the right under the charter to create ordinances. But since this is language that is enforced by the sheriff's office, I would recommend if council wants to move forward with any code amendments to this language that we partner with the sheriff's office in that as well so that they're part of coming up with a solution that will work for, for all. And for the community, we will be posting and updating our agenda online to reflect the PowerPoint that April has today with our code language. So I believe, staff, that you have that, and April is on, so I'll let her walk through the slides.
Good morning, Madam Chair and council. For the record, I am April Firth from Community Development. Last week, I attended that public meeting where the constituent brought forward concerns and the suggested language to our Title IX Public Peace, Safety, and Morals Code. This code, like Kathleen said, consists of part code enforcement, part animal control, and part sheriff's office. So I thought I would take the lead on this so the constituents' concerns would be heard. But, and like Kathleen said, I do want to clarify that the piece of the code in question would be enforced by, and if you wanted to move forward, it would need to be done probably with partnership of the sheriff's office because it's not enforceable within code enforcement. But I can assist, I'm happy to assist with whatever needs to happen between the sheriff's office and the biannual, and the code update, since I am in the middle of doing that for Community Development. So the first slide is the Clark County Title IX Public Disturbance Code. I don't know if you can see the slide, but it basically lays out what is a public noise disturbance. It then refers to animal noises and then refers to Title VIII, which is our animal control code. And then it goes within our, it goes to our barking code within that, barking dog code. And then it speaks to motor vehicles and noise disturbances and timeframes concerning those. It then moves to the purpose of commercial advertising on public streets, as far as noise goes, and continues and talks about noise within 100, within 1,000 feet of schools, hospitals, and nursing homes. Next is the use of musical instruments, sound amplifiers, and other devices that produce loud or ruckus sounds which emanate frequently, repetitively, and continuously from any building or property so as to unreasonably disturb the peace. If you move to the next slide, this is the City of Vancouver, which was referenced by the constituent last week, and I've highlighted what his suggestion was. He would like to add the language that states yelling, shouting, hooting, whistling, or singing on or near the public streets, particularly between the hours of 10:00 and 7:00, 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., or at any time and place in a manner so as to unreasonably disturb or interfere with the peace, comfort, and repose of owners or possessors of real property, which I've also included enlarged on the next slide for you. So again, I'm more than happy to assist the sheriff's office in amending this code, but I do believe that I should take them as a partner because they would be the one having to enforce it.
Questions? I was wondering, April, if this language is consistent with what you find in the area in general? Vancouver City, surrounding cities, but is it, is it consistent?
I have not looked at other cities, but I can get back to you. I can get back to you on that. The only one I did look at was the City of Vancouver because that's what he referenced, but I don't mind at all looking at Camas, Washego, Battleground. I can do that.
I would just feel uncomfortable if it was out of line with others in the area, and it probably isn't if it's in line with Vancouver City, but thank you for doing that.
Yep.
Other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor Rylander?
So the only concern I have here is, is what constitutes a noise level that's too high? In other words, if you're, if you're singing and walking past somebody's property after 10 o'clock at night, how loud is too loud? Is there, is there a decibel threshold or something? I mean, I absolutely understand people wanting to make sure that people don't go stark raving crazy and that it needs to be enforced, but this just seems vague enough so that we could possibly see situations where someone complained about something that somebody else says that's not unreasonable at all. That's my only concern.
Counselor Rylander, I don't believe that you could, I don't believe any noise coming from us would be past the, a decimal point. But I, but it reminds me of if you had, it reminds me of the part where I, where I would come in or code enforcement would come in, which is running a business in a residential area between certain times or even construction. After 10, a lot of that has to stop, and it reminds me of that part of our code, which is enforceable by code enforcement. I think it more has to do with the timeframes. And, and so any hooting or whistling or singing during certain timeframes. And I think that it's probably, I mean, you could easily add continue, continuous hooting, singing, whistling.
I just don't know what unreasonably means.
Madam Chair?
I was thinking something similar when I was reading the City of Vancouver's code.
Counselor Medici?
Yeah, so there actually are, decimal levels are defined by state law under Ecology's code. Of course, all the local Of course, all the, uh, local municipalities, local governments are responsible for enforcing it. This is, this is really a complicated and challenging area. And somewhat like pornography, you know what is unreasonable when you hear it. But, uh, the ten to seven is the threshold, uh, we're responsible for enforcing it. Um, and this is all going to boil down to enforcement. And so I want to caution the constituency out there that, you know, code enforcement for, by the county is extremely limited as to the areas and effectiveness. Um, it really is up to local law enforcement, up to the sheriff. I think we need this, you know, the, the important message, uh, is twofold. One, uh, beyond the sheriff, beyond local law enforcement, beyond code enforcement. Uh, people, uh, especially related to private nuisance have the availability to go to court, whether to Superior District Court and small claims for, for private nuisances to abate them, or to get, uh, restraining orders through Superior Court. Uh, there, the court can deal with these issues as well, uh, if they're ongoing, and it's certainly complicated by Airbnb's parties that are routinely held at short-term rentals. You know, this is a very complicated area. So the other message out to the community is, please be considerate of your neighbors. That's where it all starts. You know, you don't have a right to disturb the peace of other people, no matter where you are. Uh, and, you know, the state law that defines, uh, what's reasonable and unreasonable by dec- a decimal level, breaks it down basically into residential, commercial and industrial. You know, there are different levels, uh, that are restricted, but it all boils down to please be considerate of your neighbors. Uh, so we can, I think we can take our best shot at this, but the public needs to know enforcement is not our domain. Now, we can't provide relief for all these private nuisances that occur, whether it's barking dogs, loud parties, loud motorcycles, you name it, you know, it's, it's an enforcement arm that does not belong to the county.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counsel Olson?
Um, yeah, I, I, I agree with Counsel Medwidge. I, I do think we need to, to take a, a step in this direction. And I think the time, the time period is the critical piece. But, but we know what yelling and shouting and hooting and whistling is. I mean, we're not talking about Christmas caroling here. Um, so, so we all know what this is. Uh, and, you know, oftentimes we hear, um, from code enforcement and from the sheriff that I, there's no, there's no code to enforce, so I couldn't do anything even if I wanted to. And in this case, it gives the sheriff's office an opportunity to, um, to respond to a complaint or respond to a, a, a community member when a serious situation is occurring. So, and in some of these cases, it might be a mental health situation. Um, so there's an issue there that I think if we have this in place, uh, it gives, it gives our law enforcement deputies a chance to at least make a decision on whether they're going to respond or not.
April, I'd like to thank you for, uh, well, on two grounds. Uh, number one is for pointing out very clearly that this is in response to a constituent concern. And that's exactly what brings it here. And, um, I think that's, that's important. And, um, I, I appreciate the fact that, that that responsiveness, uh, from you, uh, ha- has been there and for your calling that out. Secondly, I thank you for your willingness to work with the sheriff's office on this, even though your office is, is not, uh, directly responsible for the enforcement. I think your experience in this area, uh, will bring insight to, um, the overall approach that would be ultimately used. So, um, thank you for your willingness to do that. And I'd like to suggest that, um, we ask you to go forward in, in that regard, making that contact with the sheriff's office and, and, uh, seeing what would come next.
Madam Chair, can I, I also want to ask this. Since this was added to the agenda, it did come primarily from one constituent, uh, or, uh, several. Uh, but this has been on, we've heard from other constituents over the years on similar issues. I'm wondering, since this was just added to the, to the agenda, does that constituent even know that we just had this uh, public discussion? I mean, I, will someone get back to, how do we publicize that we're working on this? I guess is the baseline question.
We, we can send him a message and let him know, um, that this discussion happened. We can send him a link to this discussion and keep him informed as we move through the process.
Thank you.
Are there others who would be interested in seeing April discuss this with the sheriff's office? Yeah, good, okay. And you can do that when the, the time is right, as you and the, and Kathleen, uh, determine, given the changes that are, are coming up, um, very soon. Before, before we know it, we'll know what those changes are. So, uh, you all can determine the timing on that. Is there anything else to add to this, uh, this discussion? Okay, counselor reports.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, April.
Madam Chair?
Counselor reports.
Yes, ma'am.
Go right ahead, Counsel Rylander.
Uh, just a, a, a little brief note that, uh, Monday morning of this week was the second meeting of the, uh, regional tolling, uh, committee over in Portland. There were twenty-plus members, uh, of the committee that showed up physically and another half a dozen online, a few comments from the public. Most of the discussion was focused around the proposed charter and the feedback that they received, uh, and how to proceed forward. So the next meeting will be the, uh, the latter part of November around Thanksgiving, early December. And the net takeaway for me was that there are a lot of concerns and a bit of angst about all of the different tolling efforts that the, uh, ODOT is looking into. And, and it's all, it's complexity. There's questions around the equity, equality, uh, impact on, uh, on costs on families, on businesses, et cetera. So a lot more to come. I've actually put together a binder that has the materials for each of the meetings so that they'll be available to the counselor. Counsel moving forward if you want to review it. Thank you.
I have just a, a couple of comments. Uh, one of them is that we receive as counsel from Community Development, uh, every week, a seven-day snapshot, uh, which compares weekly activity levels, uh, this year with the previous years on, um, development-related things such as, uh, new home construction permits, animal protection and control complaints and so on. I just noticed in looking at new home construction that the numbers are really vastly different over time. And it is of concern if you put on your affordable housing hat for a moment. Back in twenty eighteen, year-to-date, we had thirteen hundred and eighty-nine uh, permits that were issued by that time of the year, thirteen eighty-nine. And that compares to this year, seven hundred and seventy. We know that one of the factors of affordable housing is availability of housing. So, um, this is an important thing to, uh, find out. I, I think why that is the case. I asked a couple of developers that I happen to be talking to anyway, and they said, well, we have concerns with available land as far as, um, you know, really being able to, uh, go for more than one house in one place when we're looking for permits. So maybe there are multiple factors that are going into that, but it is of concern with the number of permits. A second, uh, comment is on a program that Counsel for the Homeless put on for their annual luncheon this last week called Making Home Possible. And they, uh, brought in a, uh, speaker, national speaker, and had a virtual event around fundraising. It was superbly done. They raised two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in one hour. Not bad, wouldn't you agree? And they had the keynote speaker as Greg Colburn, uh, PhD, MBA, MSW, a very interesting chap, who, um, takes a look at why do we have homelessness? And his point, whether you agree with it or not, he makes a compelling case, is that we can look at homelessness as caused by individuals. Oh, individuals don't want to have a home. They don't want the responsibility. They have alcohol and drug problems. The individual does this, does that. It can be looked at from that perspective. Or it can be looked at systemically as what are the reasons why a community is not providing the home, the homes that are affordable to people? The latter is the position that he takes. I, I really recommend his book called Homelessness is a Housing Problem. And I bet you that the Counsel for Homelessness would let you have a copy to read, or you're welcome to read mine if you wish. It was very well done. So hats off to Counsel for the Homelessness for a job well done on a difficult thing, I think, which is, uh, an online fundraiser. Other counsel reports?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Counselor?
So I, I attended on Monday the, uh, AAR of, uh, all the contributing agencies on the Nakia Fire. And I, so I just want to highlight a couple of points that the general public probably is becoming well aware of. Uh, but this generally is a good news story. County and for, especially the residents up in the Livingston area, Livingston Mountain area, uh, and all those that had to be evacuated. There wasn't a single loss of life. No structures lost, no homes lost, uh, in a fire that was adjacent to forest land with incredibly dry conditions and jumping winds. Uh, the public has to know that these were, uh, absolutely professionals in charge, coming up with, uh, rolling in and setting up their firebase at Roe Verfield, a partnership with the Port of Waschuluu Camas. Uh, it was tactically and strategically executed with the, the firefight objectives on the ground that worked successfully. But the, the collaboration that occurred, and these are all interstate, regional compacts. You know, the, uh, Oregon Department of Forestry, uh, pretty much owned this fire. You know, they took it over. Uh, local resources were very rapidly overcome, but it was a partnership with the local, uh, Fire District Three, uh, Washington Department of Natural Resources and, and the Fire Now area now does belong to DNR once again. But Oregon rolled in, took over the whole field. So all, uh, great collaborative work. There were some learning lessons that we can improve on. And, uh, Cressa, uh, saw that we, although the alerts worked very well, they could have been, uh, and the information flow could have been done a lot uh, better, especially for those pending evacuation and those that were evacuated. That was one learning lesson. Our, um, fairgrounds was pretty quickly overwhelmed as far as large animals and how that was handled. So there's going to be a lot of work in the future on planning that a little bit better, especially with all the volunteer, uh, equestrian groups uh, out there. But, um, you know, at the, the sheriff's office, our own public works, they all chipped in. And I, the last comments I want to make, uh, so the public understands, you know, Camas had a football game, local football game. They invited, uh, fire department leadership to come and, um, there was one gentleman who's the deputy incident commander from Oregon. He said it was the most meaningful event he ever attended in his thirty-plus years of firefighting. They really appreciated all the letters from the grade schools and Camas High School, uh, that they received. In fact, they read some of them, uh, to the firefighters. And there, there was a YouTube video that we helped, uh, promote as well. They were really touched, uh, by the outpouring of support, uh, by the community. You know, neighbors alerting neighbors, neighbors helping neighbors, and then neighbors showing their support for firefighters. We all love firefighters, and this was a reminder of just why we do. Thank you.
Any additional counselor reports? I understand there are no work session requests. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Lindsay here, our, how about a policy report?
I do have one thing for you this morning. So, um, I just spoke, um, to some of our rural broadband folks yesterday. Um, the State Broadband Office is holding a meeting on Friday, so this is short notice, but they're holding a meeting on Friday, um, regarding some of the potential criteria for the next round of State Broadband Office, uh, broadband grants. One of the criteria that there's a lot of political pressure for them to adopt is the open access network requirement. And this is one that, um, we've spoken about before, um, but is particularly problematic for Clark County, given that we only have one, um, active county-wide franchisee and the open access network is, um, not functional for, um, their business model. So, the, um, there have been a number of jurisdictions, not all by any stretch, but there have been a number of jurisdictions that have expressed in written comments to the State Broadband Office, um, concerns with the open access network requirement, um, as well as some of the other proposed criteria. So I don't know if you want me to prepare a letter. Um, we don't have time. Unfortunately, like I said, it's on Friday, but I can prepare a letter at least, um, expressing some of the, the information that I hear, um, and get that, you know, as part of the comments. Or I can at least monitor the meeting on Friday and keep you posted. But I wanted to let you know that that's happening and kind of get the council feedback on how you'd like to proceed.
Feedback.
Now, this is a, a very challenging area. It's really, uh, gets to the nub of a public-private partnership, uh, when we partner with public, a, a private entity, uh, but it, because of their own business model and, um, competitive concerns, you know, it really, you know, we, we lost some grants or Comcast lost some grants on this issue. Um, I, I don't know what the right answer is. I would, I, Lindsay, I would like to see a letter that, um, you could prepare. And then I think it's a tough policy decision. Uh, this is a, gonna open up the, the aperture for us or close it. Um, and it's going to be a tough decision by, by the Department of Commerce. So I, I would like to see what your thoughts are in a letter and see whether I can support it or not. Obviously, I want to roll out broadband as, as best we can. But, you know, the private marketplace is a competitive model and always has been in our nation's history. So anyway, it's, uh, it's a tough policy call.
I think in terms, there, there are some jurisdictions, um, I'm looking at Chelan County, PUD and King County, that have taken the approach that while they recognize there are some public benefits to having an open access network, it's not really feasible in every jurisdiction. Um, and so to suggest to the State Broadband Office that it be a scoring criteria and that you leave it up to the local governments to decide, because if they have a situation where they can encourage open access network, then that's great, and perhaps they should. But they may have a situation similar to Clark County where we really can't compete if the open access is a threshold requirement. And so to leave it up to the, the local jurisdictions to decide how to prioritize what, um, grants they're willing to partner with. Um, so to make it a, a local decision point rather than a state mandate.
And, and Madam Chair, I, I support that position. Uh, I think that's pretty well-informed and gives us more, uh, local, uh, control and puts the burden on us locally to make those policy decisions. So I would support a letter, uh, advocating for that.
Are there others who would? Thumbs up or? So if you, if you wish to support that, okay? Um, so Lindsay, as soon as that's drafted, would, would you mind just, uh, emailing it around to all of us for a quick looksee?
Sure, I can do that. Just remember, don't reply all, but I'll circulate all the comments as best as I can and put something together.
Thank you. Um, anything else on policy? Okay, we now, uh, move into, as amended, three executive sessions. This was- This was amended on the agenda before we got underway with our meeting today. There are three executive sessions, a ten-minute session, a fifteen-minute session, and another one of potential litigation added for ten minutes. So that would total thirty-five minutes, which, I don't know, what do you say, about eleven fifty that we would be back for sure to wrap up? And I doubt it that there will be any after action, is that correct, Leslie?
That is correct, there will be no after action.
But Council will be present, and we will be back at the suggested time to close out council time. So thank you all very much, and we'll, I'll see you in a moment in executive session, Counselors.
Hello, Council is extending executive session for ten more minutes and will be returning at noon. Thank you.
Again, this is Wednesday, October twenty-six, 2022. Council has completed three executive sessions as discussed earlier and concluded on them with no after action, but now we're back in council time for the singular purpose of adjournment. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.